Call of order, November 18th, 2024 County Commission Meeting. I'm out of breath because I ran down the steps. Welcome all of our guests here tonight. At this time, I'll introduce Commissioner Rich for our prayer and pledge. I would like, before Commissioner Rich starts, to let you know that I got a call from Ms. Carol Bush. That's Mr. Frank. He used to be a commissioner here. He were in England, London, and he fell and hurt himself there and has been there for about three weeks. He's working to try to get him home, and we're working with her to do that. But definitely remember her and Frank in your prayers, if you will. And if any of you have any correspondence with her, you could reach out to her. Mr. Gentry, anything else?
No, thanks very much. I talked to Carol yesterday. He's doing rehab about two to three ti- three to four times a day now. Starting to walk around a little bit. I think he had a brain bleed, a stroke-type brain bleed, and we're trying to get him back. I even offered to go over there and help him come back, but then we haven't got that squared away yet. We're still working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rich?
Good evening to everyone here and attendance, also those that are joining online. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'd like to introduce Jeff Pratt. He is the official at Emmanuel Baptist Church. He is my pastor, and I'm happy to have him here tonight. And I've asked him to come and pray over our meeting and as we go forward in the next couple of months through the holidays, be with all those that have had losses and continue to bless this county.
Please rise.
All right, let's pray together. Father, I thank you for this opportunity to come and share a blessing with this group. Father, I thank you for the authorities that you've established. Lord, your word says that there is no authority except that which you have established. So, Father, we know that you have established this, you've put this in place, and you've put it in place for our protection, for our benefit, and for our good. So, God, I pray for those that are here that will make decisions. Lord, we have people that represent people all over this county that are here today that have committed themselves as public servants to help make decisions. And, Father, I pray for them. Give them your guidance, give them your direction. Lord, let them listen to you as they make decisions for those they represent. And, Father, there are people here tonight who will come and will speak to issues that they are very passionate about. And, Father, I thank you for them, that they're concerned, and they have the forum to come and to do that. So, Lord, I pray that they would share with passion, and I pray that as we leave this place, we would leave believing in faith, knowing, Lord, that as decisions are made, we trust you for the good. Father, we thank you for our chairman, for our mayor, for his heart, his love for you, and his love for this county. So, Father, bless this time together, I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
You will remain standing properly, address the flag.
Aye. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. That is my pastor, by the way. He is a Tennessee ball fan.
All right.
Well, maybe not. Maybe he's a Kentucky fan.
Wildcats.
But he has done a tremendous job over the last several weeks of the Ten Commandments. Pastor, appreciate you for that. You will now press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Commissioner Smith did call me and tell me he was going to be out of pocket tonight. Commissioner Smith is out tonight. Are we ready? Twenty-four present, one absent. This time, we'll have public comment. This public comment period is for people that want to speak on anything that's on the agenda tonight. If you're here for the rezoning, either on the Crouched, 840 Crouched Pike rezoning or on the Cumberland Oaks Pud, that will be a little bit later that you'll speak on that. So, anybody else that has something else they'd like to add that's on the agenda, just forward time, state, step forward, state your name and address for the record, and we'll let you speak. Seeing none, we'll close public comment period. We'll move on now with Commissioner Jerry McFarland for presentation.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, ladies and gentlemen, and the audience here, we have just finished our 225th anniversary of the founding of this county. We had a celebration at the fairgrounds, and we started, I'm sorry, Sue, we were at the Ag Center, and we started with a bang, and I have a short, two-minute video to show you here, and then another few comments. But we ended up in the black, and we've already brought in about $6,000 worth of revenue of items sold that have gone back into the county coffers, if you will.
Corey?
Fire!
That's the bang.
I go to Watertown High School. Well, it was originally for a project for my theater class, but I figured it would be fun, so we spent time working on monologues and getting costumes together, and we came out here to celebrate the 225th birthday of Wilson County.
As the theatrical program in Watertown High School, I'm partaking in it, and it just seemed like a very good chance to express myself.
Great honor to get to be a part of the 225th year celebration of Wilson County and to be a part of the 50th year celebration of James E. Ward Agricultural Center. And as I reflect on this location, this facility, and what it means to Wilson County...
First of all, I want to say, when I first moved to Wilson County, I met Stratton Buck. First thing he told me was, "This is the James E. Ward Agricultural Center, and always remember that." And I said, "Yes, sir." And I do, didn't I, Stratton? Thanks to everyone that's come out today. I want to say a special thank you to all of you, family members and friends that have donated and helped pay for this monument. It did not cost the county one penny. All of you all did it, and when you see it, I think you all are going to be extremely proud of it. So, with that being said, oh, let me say this. This lady right here, I called her Jocelyn Conrad of Conrad Construction. I'm sure most of you know her. And I said, "I need some concrete." And she said, "What do you need that for?" And I said, "A monument." She said, "How much do you need?" And I said, "I don't know."
One, two, three.
It was a good event on Saturday. We had a good crowd, but I think the real highlight was on Thursday and Friday because we had 2,000 fourth-grade students. They had 18 history stations to go to. They were only like 10 minutes per station. They had lunch on the grounds, and it gave them a real bath, if you will, in the history of our county and where we all came from, and that's really what this was all about for us. So, with that said, I want to ask Sue Vanatta to come forward. Sue, you've got a little something we want to do here.
Good evening, everyone. This is my guest, Tom Grant. Tom said, "Did you used to attend this?" And I said, "For eight years I did, no longer." But Tom wrote a song for the 200th anniversary of Wilson County. And I was amazed when we played it at that event that so many people had never heard it. So, we're going to play that song tonight. But let me tell you a little bit about Tom. He's a singer, songwriter, and TV personality who has proudly lived in Wilson County for more than 40 years. How many of you watched The Ralph Emory Show years ago? He was there. He and his wife Beverly, who's back there along with their band, have entertained folks all over the country, traveled around the world, performed in Switzerland, France, Poland, Russia. As a songwriter, Tom has written songs for country legends like Eddie Arnold, Tammy Wynette, Mickey Gilli, Ray Price, to name a few. Tom has always loved being a part of this wonderful and historic community, and for more than 20 years has performed at the Wilson County Fair and supported the Fiddler's Grove Historic Village. I present to you now Mr. Tom Grant.
Thank you, Sue. I call Sue Suzie Q. You remember that song? And I'm so happy that my wife is here, and Jerry and Sue were responsible for, I guess, getting this song out to where it is right now. We put it in a time capsule, and in fact, we had a bunch of kids at the Lakeview School sing along on the last chorus of this. But it's a song that was written, I consulted one of the old residents of this town, Johnny Wright, who used to be married to, well, he was married to Kitty Wells, they're both gone now. But he gave me a little history, and then I looked a lot of it up. We live in the greatest county in the whole wide world, and I love this place, and it's, yeah, a lot of dittos on that. And I know you've got a lot of business to take care of tonight, so I won't be too long, and I asked Sue to just play the song, but she's going to play the whole thing that was part of the dedication for the, it'll be open in 75 years, right?
That's right.
You going to be here? Okay. Anyway, it's a song about the three cities of Wilson County, and thank God there aren't 12 of them. Go ahead, let, go ahead, let's play this song. By the way, Mayor Hutto, thank you.
...........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Tom, on behalf of Vanatta and Ms. Vanatta, Commissioner McFarland and Commissioner Vanatta, and myself and the full County Commission, we'd like to present you with...
Oh, wow, that's awesome.
Phil Ponder portrait of Wilson County Courthouse.
Phil's an old friend of mine. That's great.
We thank you for what you've done for Wilson County. You've put us on the map in music, radio, TV, commercials.
I've enjoyed it.
But you love this place like all the rest of these people, and we thank you for that, and thank you for this song here. It means a lot to all of us.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. I'll let you carry that.
One last thing I want to say. None of this could have happened if it hadn't been for the staff at Fiddler's Grove. Scott Salyers specifically, he arranged everything, and all the committee members that came together here and put this event together. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner McFarland, and I don't know if we realize this or not, but I hope you do, because I'll just make a record of it now, that, Mr. Tom, thank you for the song, and by boat of this body, you just adopted that song as the county song. You have a lysm plate, you have a flag, and now you have a county song. And, Mr. Tom, thank you so much for what you did there. We appreciate that, and County Commission as well. Thank you. Support and steering committee, Commissioner Fields?
Yes, steer, steer to be in call session on Monday, October 28th, 2024, here in the County Commission Room. We also met in regular session on Thursday, November 7th, here in the County Commission Room. You have a settlement, and so both of those meetings, I'll move that they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Adopting the agenda, Commissioner Fields?
Yes, everyone has a copy of the agenda. If there are no changes or additions, I'll make a motion that they be adopted.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Consent agenda? There's none, are there?
Mr. Chairman, there is no consent agenda.
This time, I'll ask Commissioner Marlowe to come forward for a special presentation. He is. Mr. Larry, would you come forward, please?
Hello there. Have a resol-
Don't, you all face that way, where everybody can see you now.
Have a resolution tonight from the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring the 60th anniversary of Larry's Barber Shop, where a small business employs nearly half of Americans' workshop, workforce, and represents the heart and soul of communities just like ours. Larry's Barber Shop has been a well-respected establishment since 1964. For 60 years, the Barber Shop has served as a gathering place where residents would converge and forge connections, and Larry and his team are known for their top-notch service and customer satisfaction, making sure that each customer leaves feeling confident and stylish. Larry's Barber Shop represents other small businesses that are pillars of their communities and the engine of our economy. In increasingly digitized world, it is important to recognize the small business that remind us of the human connection that define our community. By supporting these enterprises, we not only sustain local economies, but also cherish the unique identities and relationships that make Wilson County home. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, on behalf of Wilson County citizens, that we hereby recognize and celebrate Larry's Barber Shop's 60th anniversary, and sincerely thank Larry and his team for the excellent service and positive impact they bring on our community.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank you very much. And I've always liked telling a little joke or something that happened in the shop. One day, I was cutting this little boy's hair. He was about 10 years old, and he must, he must have been thinking about wanting to be a barber or something one day, maybe. And he said, "How did you do the first head you ever cut?" I said, "Well, I was doing real good till I run out of hair." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Larry, and I know Mr. Larry has put up with traffic from West Elementary for quite some time. We've had many conversations there, and I know people like Sheriff Bryan that run countywide know that Mr. Larry has to be on your side for all of us that have to work for votes here every four years, and he is definitely an icon in that area. Thank you, Mr. Larry, for all you did. We did have another one that we were going to do tonight with Bates and Hooker, but all of their members could not be here, so we'll do that next month. It celebrated several years as an anniversary as well. I'm going to introduce now Ms. Sarah Davenport to come forward. I'll brag on Sarah because we started this a few years ago, where the art that's done in the local schools, we started displaying, and you'd think that'd be something easy to get done each year, but it isn't. It's a challenge to get it done and get it done within the school year, and I'm going to let her tell you about that. But thank you for what you do on that, Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor Hutto. Good evening, Commissioners. I would like to invite some students to come up and join me, if you wouldn't mind, please, and also Mr. Luttrell, Ms. Anna Wenzinger, Olivia Schultz, and Avery Hall. We have a couple other students who couldn't be with us tonight, so I'll mention those in just a, just a little bit. As they make their way up here, I'll go ahead and tell you, as Mayor Hutto said, we have new artwork in the courthouse. This is a project that we've done for several years now. I really enjoy working on this because we have some truly talented students in Wilson County. And if you've not got to see this, we have a gallery set up out in the lobby tonight, so if you didn't see it when you come in, please stop by and look at that before you leave tonight. I think you will be very impressed with what these young ladies are able to do, and we really appreciate you all letting us have this artwork on display for the next year. It will be on display for a year. After tonight, we will move it downstairs to the hallway just outside of the trustees' office. Get a lot of foot traffic through there, so lots of people will be able to see that and enjoy it for the next year. But tonight, I wanted to acknowledge these artists, and thank you again for letting us borrow your artwork, and wanted to present you with a certificate as well. So, we have Ms. Anna Wenzinger from Green Hill High School. Ms. Olivia Schultz from Mount Juliet High School. And Ms. Avery Hall from Wilson Central High School. And then the students who couldn't be with us tonight was Ms. Ava Stasic from Watertown High School, Elsie Suddeth from Lebanon High School, and Omina Casanova from the Barry Tatum Virtual Learning Academy. So, thank you, ladies, very much. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Director Luttrell, as well, for allowing this to happen. We enjoy showing their artwork off here at the courthouse. At this time, we have a public hearing that is for the 840 Crouched Pike Master Plan Development, as well as for the Cumberland Oaks Division. Mr. Tom will come forward and start this process. I'll need a motion to go out of session, I think. All in favor, say aye. Tom?
Good evening, and before we get started, I think we ought to have a chop-toss in Tom Grant's honor, for those of you that watched The Ralph Emory Show back in earlier times. Do you want me to cover the two hearings separately?
So, we'll have, on the first one, we'll read both of the developments that are coming before you tonight, the one at 840 and the one at Cumberland Oaks. Then we'll let the public speak first on Cumberland Oaks, if you're back here to speak on that. Second, speak on the 840, and then we'll go back into session, and we'll deal with Cumberland Oaks first, and then the 840 second. Okay? Tom?
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, November 18th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. or thereafter in the County Commission Room of the Wilson County Courthouse, located here at 228 East Main Street in Lebanon, Tennessee, to hear comments on the following. Joe Haddix, representing CSDG, who is representing the property owner Logistics 840 LLC, has made application to request an amendment to the 840 slash Crouched Pike Master Development Plan. The property is located at 101 Logistics Drive, containing 13.8 acres, more or less, and is further referenced by Wilson County Property Map 138, parcel 34. The other application that we have tonight is an application that has been made by Mr. Caleb Thorne on behalf of property owners B&amp;R Lebanon Investments, seeking to rezone approximately 406.81 acres from R1 Rural Residential and A1 Agricultural zoning to R1 with a planned unit development overlay, or R1 Pud. The properties are located on Bates Road, Estes Road, and Chafford Place, being referenced further as Wilson County Property Map 14, parcels 5.04, parcel 7, parcel 8, and Wilson County Map 26, parcel 3.03. A copy of each of these requests has been on file in the Wilson County Planning Office, located here at 228 East Main Street in Lebanon, Tennessee, and has been available for inspection during regular business hours. Anyone requesting, wishing to speak is requested to come forward at this time.
It's time for you to come, if you, I think I have two names on here right now. And I'll start with the first one, Mr. Derek Dodson. If you just state your name again, Mr. Derek, and your address for the record.
Derek Dodson, 106 Chapman Drive. This came before the planning commission, and the site planner did a very impressive job laying it out. The planning commission spent over two hours discussing various issues, but the ball was punted to you guys without any consideration of big picture issues. You guys are being asked to set a precedent for over 1,000-plus other raw acres in the area, and with 630 raw acres adjacent to the east to this property, and also riverside property. The precedent is for high-density zoning in the boonies and adjacent to the river. This is the same body that passed 80 square, 80,000 square foot lots in the boonies. And yet now you're being asked to do over 200 lots at 5,500 square feet, and some even less than that, which is something you would hear the city perhaps have a request for, not in the county. It's a lovely development. It is well done. It is impressive. It's the, the open space that's left is, is, you know, an ideal project development. But, you know, you're not just looking at this development. You're looking at acres all over the county, with this as a precedent, but just in this area alone. And without me getting into any traffic, sewer, water, and all that issues, which are common sense to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Next one on my list would be Mr. Caleb Thorne. I didn't state this at the beginning, but Mr. Thorne, I have a three limit, three-minute time limit on this.
Yes, sir. Caleb Thorne, 1100 Misty Lake Drive, Lebanon, Tennessee, representing Cumberland Oaks Development. Tonight, I don't plan to go through the project in detail like we did at planning commission, just hit the highlights of the process and what we're asking for. The process for our team started over a year and go with B&amp;R, decided to engage each of our team members to come up with something special for Wilson County. This immediately began with asking the neighbors, the political officials, county staff, what would be desired of this 400 acres that most of you know as a portion of the Reba McIntyre property. The highlighted feedback that we got from a week-long public forum and meetings was to create a destination location that the county can reference for new companies coming into the area for their employees. The Chalford neighbors that are adjacent to us requested we did not do access through their subdivision. The other neighbors desired the development to be pushed more towards the river and not adjacent to them. And many in the area really wanted to limit the impact of stormwater to Spence Creek watershed. After hearing this feedback, our team was in task with coming up with a master plan that not only adhered to these comments, but also create other benefits like creating a low-density, same as the future land use map suggests, creating multiple building types, addressing traffic concerns, creating road sections that satisfy the road commission and fire while also functioning as a walkable community, and maximizing uses in open space. After this, and only after this, is when the team went to the county's toolbox. To accomplish these goals is why we're requesting a PUD development. As outlined in the zoning ordinance, the four purposes of a PUD must promote flexibility of design and permit planned diversification in the location of structures. It also must promote efficient use of land in order to facilitate a more economic arrangement of buildings, circulation systems, land use, and utilities. It must preserve to the greatest extent possible the existing landscape features and amenities and utilize such features in a harmonious fashion. And finally, as noted, it says it must encourage the total planning of tracts of land consistent with pertinent long-range plants. Our plan not only adheres to these guidelines and purposes, but also goes above and beyond code requirements in many areas like size of property, open space, impervious area, building size, parking, and civic spaces. After agreeing this was the right tool to accomplish our goals, our process then outlined this opportunity to compare the PUD details to other code standards that are common practices currently occurring in the county. This would be similar to the portion of the number-one variance related to side setbacks. Also, the number-two variance related to lot size criteria, and the number-three variance related to five-foot sidewalks, as noted in the letter from planning in your packet.
Our time is there.
Tom?
Okay. It was, it was a great effort on our end. Appreciate the three minutes, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Had nobody else on my list. Seeing nobody else, I'll take a motion to go back into session.
Motion to go back into session.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tom, we'll deal with the Cumberland Oaks first, if we can. Just for clarification, because I've had some conversation with people, my thinking early on was to address the six variances first, see which one of those you liked and didn't like, and then address the whole project. But I've kind of been redirected, I think, by talking with Mike and Tom. So we'll address the whole project in the beginning. And then once you do address that, if you decide to pass that, then we'll have six variances to go through as well. Okay? And what we're looking for here is to rezone it from, I'm sure I say this right here. We're going to rezone it from the 406 acres from R1 residential and A1 agricultural to an R1 PUD. When you rezone that land, if that's what you choose to do, you've approved the PUD. We're not going to go back and have a meeting on the PUD too, okay? We'll go back and have one on the ordinances, the variances, but not on the PUD. So once you approve the rezoning, you've approved the PUD, okay? Just making sure we're clear on the front. Mr. Tom, go ahead.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this did go to the planning commission. There was a three-hour meeting that I hope some of you had the opportunity to watch, at least this portion of that meeting. We did go in pretty exhaustive detail into the weeds on this development. Some of the highlights are that it does focus the majority of the drainage from development of this property. If you'll look at page 76, which is the last couple of pages in the document, there's a, there's an exhibit in the area in blue is the area which the majority of the development is within. It is, it also represents the watershed that drains directly to the lake as opposed to back towards Spencer Creek, which is less impactful on nearby neighbors. That's probably one of the, the highlights of it. This presentation, I do think, is something that has not been seen a whole lot in Wilson County, much less in Middle Tennessee. They're, they're using some terms that you may not be familiar with, such as form-based code. They're, they're using building typologies and things like that, that they're going to have internal governance of through their HOA and through their, their builder contracting with a private planner to help with making sure that the building typologies are correct as you go from section to section of this, this zone. It consists of 435 lots as proposed. The current zoning would allow approximately 353 lots when you take the current R1 zoning and the A1 zoning, if it were developed any other way. Both the current zoning and the proposed zoning still are constituted as low-density residential overall. So while some of the lot sizes are much smaller than what are, what we would have anticipated in our current PUD language, and thus some of the variances, that the overall density is not significantly different than what they would have received, and impact for that matter, is not significantly different than what would have happened if they had developed the whole thing wall-to-wall with larger lot development, in terms of number of lots. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or comments.
I want to go to Commissioner McFarland. This is in his district. Can I let you speak first, please?
Mr. Chairman, of course, I'd like to invite everybody that's attended the commissioners that attended the planning meeting that the Greater Nashville Regional Council is putting on and get a copy of this document. It was kind of an eye-opener for me. It shows in here trending growth, and it shows if we have that trending growth in a more dispersed area, or if we have it in a more compact area, what the county is going to look like as far as green space is concerned, farms, parks, whatever. We're losing our green space. And I think this thing has kind of turned my thinking around. Tom and I have ridden the property. He's actually right. The watershed goes straight into the river. It's not going to affect anybody on this side as far as we can tell. But if we don't, if we don't look at doing more compact developments, PUDs, if Tom wants to address what that really means, then, then we're going to have 10 acres in the house and another 10 acres in the house, and green spaces will fade away out of Wilson County. We'll lose the rural county, what I'm trying to say here. But anyway, they're, they're proposing or guestimating, if you will, in 2045 that we will have 257,000 residents in Wilson County. And if we allow that to keep going in a dispersed manner rather than a compact manner, we're, we'll lose the whole flavor of this county. So therefore, because of that, that alone, I'm going to vote for this. So just want to let everybody know.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
So a motion to approve the rezoning. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Now discussion. Anybody? Commissioner Kurtz?
Mayor, it's really hard, as we talked before, to separate some of the variances and the actual PUD itself, because I think understanding what the variances mean inside the PUD. But with that said, other than the totals upwards of over 800 variances total is what's being asked for. However, PUDs are not allowed in A1, so we're under our current zoning and our rules. So we're asking for A1 to now allow this PUD. And our density in R1 is 1.09, and I think the density in this is 1.43, if I'm not mistaken.
Everything you said is likely correct, with one exception. I just want to clarify, the A1 section of this property is being asked to be rezoned to a base zone district of R1.
Understood, yes.
With the PUD, overlay.
Right. But it's still going to contain part of the PUD. And I know early on, Tom mentioned that there's going to be 350 homes. I would prefer this go through planning and never even make it here. It makes so much more sense that if planning could approve it, Planning Office, the Planning Office, which means all it has to do is follow the rules of the PUD. And if it doesn't follow the rules of the PUD, and you're going to hear me argue this all the time, because I was personally, and, and those that live in the agricultural world, the fact that I can't cut off an acre of my property somewhere in A1 from, and give it to my son, daughter, grandson, I got to have 80,000 square foot. And we're doing just the opposite with this, all the way to 3,300 square foot lots. Now, imagine that across, and, and I can't disagree with Ms. McFarland on the number of people we're going to have in the county, but I don't think this is the way to do it. I think that compacting people in here is something that's made for our cities, and definitely not out in the rural area of the county. Follow our rules, and if, if you so choose to vote for the PUD, which I'm not, I have a whole list of things to discuss when we go through the variances.
Sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll come back to you. Let me get Commissioner Hall.
Tom, do you, do you know, are they going to be on a step system on this thing?
It is, it is my understanding that that is what they are going to exercise is, is their authority to use a step system.
Have they, have we looked at how big the leach field for that will be?
No, not, not at present. We do know generally where it's going to be. I do not have that information for you tonight, but it has been emailed to me, and that's, that's a misstep on my part. I should have brought that. But it's on the south, on the southern end of the property is generally where they, they've indicated that their, their leach fields will be.
Okay.
After treatment. They'll have a sand filter treatment.
Right.
System, or another form of treatment, followed by an ultraviolet stage before dispersing it back out into the leach fields, which is different than a traditional septic system.
Right.
Traditional septic system, you're simply using the ground or the earth to treat untreated sewage.
Hmm.
Whereas this, it's arguably treated before you, before it hits the ground.
Commissioner Denton?
Yes, I agree with Mike. I had the same questions he had on the size of the lots. The second thing I, I wonder about is our egress, regress, our in and out of around the infrastructure. 109 is a very busy road. Coles Ferry, very, very busy road. We've got a lot of problems in there with traffic. If we put this much of a load on it, can we carry that? Is there plans made to carry this traffic?
Well, I would, I would submit to you that they're entitled to approximately 353 lots by their current zoning, if they subdivide it and can meet all the subdivision regulations in zoning. I do not, as a, as your planner, I do not anticipate the impact being significantly different for the 80, some, 80-some-odd additional lots that they're receiving as a result of this planned unit development overlay. They're, they have also, as I understand it, and you may want to talk to the applicant about this, made some agreements with regard to road commission concerns about some off-site improvements that we can't normally obtain with rezonings. One of those would be at the intersection of Bradshaw Road and Academy. They have submitted that if the, if, after investigation, the right-of-way is there, they will make improvements to the intersection of Bradshaw Road with Academy, which is an off-site improvement. At the time that they, before they get to their 150th building lot is what I've been told. Secondly, I do believe they're making, and I'm, I'm sorry, I always get these two roads mixed up. It's either Estes or Yeltsin that is their secondary access besides Bates Road. And they are going to be making widening improvements to that secondary current road network there.
But all traffic flow has to go back to two roads initially.
Yes, sir. And, and you are correct that 109 is the primary major collector in the area, along with Academy and Coles Ferry.
Commissioner Franklin?
I don't know if they, if you want to suspend the rules and hear from the developer about those.
Commissioner Franklin?
Two questions. One, on the sidewalks, HOA is going to take care of the maintenance on. They're going to own the infrastructure.
The, part of what you'll hear during the variance request, if you'll turn to page 43, there's a road, there's a spine road that's sort of curvilinear, and goes to the, to Bates Road or, and to the other road, which I, again, I'm drawing a blank on whether it's Estes or Yeltsin, but I think it's Estes. Is that correct? The orange-colored road is a public road. All of the other roads are specified to be private roads. Part of the reason they have done that is because our road commission has a longstanding policy.
Right.
Even though we have requirements in subreg for sidewalks, we, we bow to the supremacy of the road commission and county government, being, having authority over the road network. And as such, they do not typically like sidewalks along public road rights of way. So what the developers opted to do is place the majority of the homes into a private road network.
My other question was, if this, in the county PUD approval process, this runs with the land forever, correct? If this is rezoned?
If, if they, if they begin work, it will. Just so you're, I think you're going to see one next month that's a, a proposed rezoning whereby they had previously had a 3,200-lot residential PUD passed in approximately 2006. And our PUD does have an expiry for non, for failure to begin development. It's, I think it's 24 months in the ordinance. However, state law has intervened since then that can give them up to 15 years.
15 years.
So sometime after 15 years on a multi-phase development, they would lose that zoning authority, and it would revert back to A1 or, well, actually, I think the PUD states clearly that it would revert back to A1 regardless of what the previous zoning had been, which a lot of this was R1, or is R1.
Thank you.
Did I answer your questions? You did.
I have one more. Commissioner Hall, I'll go to you. I'm, I've been schooled a little bit on trying to do what's right here, and that is let everybody speak once, and then I go back to the maker of the motion, Mr. McFarland. But I'm going to, I'm going to come to you, but I have nobody else in the hopper. But I'm going to try to start doing those, that correctly. Sorry for my mistake. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you. I was just looking through it again and noticed on some of the illustrations. I was just looking through it again and noticed on some of the illustrations that it's showing street parking.
Yes, sir.
Is that allowed in the zoning ordinance?
Typically not, but that is, that is.
Is that one of the variances they're asking?
Well, because it's on a private road network, it really falls outside of our purview.
Okay, so they're not going to have street parking on the public roads?
No, sir.
Okay.
We'll end up with Commissioner McFarlane.
The chairman and fellow commissioners, I heard what Mr. Kurtz said, agree with him totally, and Mr. Shears and I had a conversation at West Elementary while we were watching the presentation down there. I think, and we're not looking at the here and now, we're looking at the future, there'll be more PUDs coming down the road, and we're talking about compact communities. And I, we may be on the leading edge with that taking place now. And, and in our discussion, it was very much like what Mr. Kurtz did, we talked about that the PUD regs and rules are going to have change in size and variance, so that's, that's been talked about, and yes, it will, as PUDs, more PUDs come down the pike. So I just want to share that with everybody.
Okay, that's all the discussion, you ready to vote? Vote yes for the rezoning, if you want to rezone it from R1, A1 to PUD, or vote no if you don't want to.
It would be to R1 with a planning unit development overlay.
Yeah, thank you for clearing my language up. I can do a voice though, if we're all in favor. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
18 yes, 6 no.
So the rezoning passes, 18 to 6. Now we'll start with the variances, please.
Okay, the planning commission also recommended the plan you see before you with the following variances, and so you can take them and vote how you wish on, as a group, or one by one at, at your leisure, or at your pleasure. The number one is seeking a 10-foot building separation in the neighborhood center district. I'm going to ask everybody to turn to page 29. So that variance is on the far left picture on page 29. These are the lots that they are asking for 10-foot building separation. They do, in this case, have alley, alley rear access to garages in those areas. So anyways, they're asking for 10-foot separation there, and they're asking for, for 20-foot building separation in the second picture on page 29, as indicated in yellow. The PUD requires 30-foot separation between structures, PUD, current PUD language. The planning commission did hear their testimony at the planning commission and did choose to recommend approval of this variance. You want me to proceed with the rest of them, or?
No, sir, we'll do one at a time, please.
Okay.
It's okay. So you know what you're voting for? It's normally 30 feet. They're asking for a 10-foot variance is on the neighborhood center district on 79 lots, and then 20-foot on the neighborhood general district, which is 86 lots, and 10 on the waterfront, which is making a total of 96. So if you want to vote yes on giving those variances from the 10-foot and the 20-foot instead of 30-foot, vote yes. If you don't want to, vote no.
Got a motion?
I'm sorry, I need a motion first.
Motion.
You got a motion for the variance, or a second?
Sorry.
Second. Now we'll go for discussion. Commissioner Kurtz, I jump in the gun, my bad.
Well, I'm probably going to speak on each variance, so I hate to take up everybody's time, but, you know, I'm worried about fire service, private roads, parking on the road, first of all. Mr. Hall brought up a good point, even though it's a private road, our WEMA still has to navigate with the ambulance and fire engines down these roads with cars parked on them. Then we're talking about 10-foot setbacks. What would, what would be the maximum distance, 20-foot between a home, Tom, if we're talking 10-foot setbacks?
If you're talking, no, on the 10-foot separation, you're actually 5-foot setbacks. And, and where we would handle that as a county would be at the building permit stage, when they submit their housing plans in this particular development, it'll be up to the building official to ensure that they allow for what are called rated walls that help with fire separation in terms of time of burn, or time of jump from a, from a fire in one structure to the next.
So 3,300 square foot lot with how much separation between two homes?
I believe it's 5-foot.
So a 3,300 square foot lot with 5-foot between each home, already on roads that have cars parked on them. You know, I'm, again, I'm against this, definitely against this variance.
Commissioner Hobbs?
That, that's in, that's in the neighborhood center district, which is, again, on page 29. I'm sorry, I did have the numbers. I think it affects 79 lots.
It does.
And then it affect, and then the second part of the variance is 20-foot separation, which is shown in the second page on page 29.
Which is 175 total variances that were proven, and that's just if you approve one side. So if this was a normal house, if I wanted to come in and build a house and ask for setbacks, then I could have two or four sides that I'm asking for variances. So if I just say one side?
Yes, sir.
That's 175 variances that we're granting, on, on top of the fact that we're not following our stated rule in a PUD that 30 foot's required, and we're allowing 10-foot.
That is true. And as I've discussed with Commissioner Kurtz, and it was a very pleasant conversation, by the way. Kurtz is always good to come and talk to me. But we cannot anticipate every turn of events that someone might present to us. Our PUD was an effort, when it was done back in 2003 to '05, to accommodate what I'll call more detailed development. One of the things that the recent zone density change did, because I heard Mr. Kurtz also in earlier testimony, where he talked about the fact that you would be pleased if this just stayed at the planning commission or whatever. Well, when we changed the density, what it did is, if, if, if any developer wants density increases, nine times out of 10, they're going to have to come before this commission, and nine times out of 10, they're going to have to convince you why it is a benefit to Wilson County to give them that density. You're the only body that really has that authority. And I think that's maybe in part why the county commission chose to look at increasing the density across the county, or decreasing the density across the county. But what you have here is a, a development that I feel meets or exceeds our PUD standards in many ways while they are asking for variances.
One more point, I think the planning department, although might be in favor of the PUD, I don't think that you approved or anything to do with variances.
No, the, we recommended approval of the development as presented to the planning commission, but we left it to the planning commission to determine, make a judgment on their own about the variances, as we are with you.
Commissioner Hobbs?
Are they sprinkled? I don't know the answer to that one. I think that we had talked about rated walls. I don't know if you want to hear from the developer on that or not, that you'd have to.
We're good, his nod is that they are sprinkled.
That, no, they are not.
They're not sprinkled.
Okay.
They're not sprinkled.
That is certainly something you could require.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Where in the county currently do we have 10-foot building separation?
If you had it, you would have it in the cities, in, in certain instances. You have some zero lot line, certainly, where you've got townhome and condominium developments such as Beacon Hill out in the county, or Spring Hill Townhomes in the county. Beacon Hill condominium complex is on the far northwest end of the county, close to where Mr. Marlowe used to live, back off Wood Lake Drive, or Woodside, Wood Lake Drive. And, and otherwise, it would be probably in Watertown, Mount Giller, Lebanon.
Commissioner Glover, are you, no, are you going to talk?
Well, I guess this is mainly for WEMA. Have y'all looked at the private roads, see if you're going to be able to get your vehicles, your emergency vehicles in there?
Yes, everything has been reviewed by the Fire Marshal's office that you're basically building on tonight, and everything has been approved up to tonight. There are some recommended changes going forward, but everything up to this point has been approved.
Commissioner Glover, to add to that, I did reach out to Daniel Cowan today, and he said that what they had asked for were 14-foot alleyways, was one-way streets. He asked them to move to 20, and they did. Also, on the two major, two-way major thoroughfares, they were at 36 feet, he asked them to move to 38, and they did. And they accommodated according to Mr. Tom as well. So that's on the two things that came up about roadways.
They also have some roads in the neighborhood edge district that initially were 28-foot wide, and they were asked to move to 30 feet, and they did.
Also does.
But, but when I say that pavement width, that's accounting for, except for the one-way street, that's accounting for 11-foot travelways, even on the one-way street, 11-foot travelways.
Last part of this question is, as far as for WEMA, being able to respond with 5 feet, there are 10 feet, I guess, between the two houses. Do you see an issue with that, which I know you can't see into the future, but what kind of concern do y'all have with that?
That's also been looked at with, that was mentioned earlier, looking at, you know, fire-rated walls, things like that, which is basically, I think, at a later date, to be approved, but yes, that is.
You're at the rezoning stage now, and that will be some, the, the fire, the Fire Marshal and WEMA will have a chance to weigh in at the time of subdivision development and/or site plan approval, as, as well as at the building permit stage. And particularly on the rated wall issue, that's, that is, I understand it from the Fire Marshal, Mr. Cowan, under the purview of the, the building official, and he would have an opportunity at the building permit stage when he's reviewing the plans to make sure that they, they construct the, the walls to suit the separation.
Commissioner Dow?
I think Tom just answered the question I was talking about, vinyl siding, fireproof windows, all of that.
They, they do not have any vinyl, we can't, you cannot put it on there. They, they may have some vinyl soffits, but they're, but they're, they're proposing for any siding that's not brick or stone, and that's one of the other variances they're asking for, by the way, is to be allowed to use hardy board type material, concrete board siding, and/or LP composite type siding. Now, both of those are brand names, so I want to be clear about that. We're not telling them they've got to use that brand, but it's a, it's a certain material that, as I understand it from the building official, is fire resistant, I think. It's not, he's not sure about fire rating, but it does keep.
It's just coated.
Yeah, it's coated, and it, when it does catch fire, it tends to.
Well, you got, you got, it's kind of like a.
Yeah, sure. But that's one of the other variance requests.
Commissioner Reese?
Just wondering if the developer could actually explain the parking plan?
Once we go through that, it's hard to go back to that and open it up.
Right, well, no, just to be able to understand, I guess maybe I should wait till number four, we're talking about the private roads, but I'm trying to understand as to, are we talking about actually parking on both sides of the road, and then?
In certain, in certain instances, yes.
Okay, and?
Certain instances, all around one side.
And there's no, no garages for those homes, so your permanent parking is in front of your house?
No, sir, no, ma'am. Most of those have alley access for rear garage entry.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Does that get your questions answered?
No, but I guess I'll wait till number four, and I'll ask it again.
All right. Anybody else before we vote on variance one?
That's fine.
Okay. Did I have a motion and a second on that?
Yes.
I got a motion, a second. Are you ready to vote? You know what we're voting on? We're voting on the variance and going from 30 feet in between these homes to 10 in between some, and 20 between some others. If you want to do that, vote yes. If you don't want to, vote no. Mr. Gentry? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Love, yes, love, no, yes.
That would be a no for me. I would vote on this, right? Yeah, I'll vote no on the variance.
Okay, so that, that motion fails, the variance fails. The second one is seeking a variety of minimum lot sizes. The neighborhood center district is requesting a minimum lot size of 3,300 square feet with an average lot size of 5,180 square feet. Sorry, I have to get my notes in order here. That affects 79 lots. The neighborhood general district, they're requesting a minimum of 5,500 square foot lots with an average lot size of 8,835 square feet, and that, that affects approximately 298 lots of the total 435. The neighborhood edge district is requesting a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet, but the average lot size in this one is 37,672 square feet. So that average lot size actually exceeds what our PUD could require, and that affects 48 lots of the total 435. The waterfront district is asking for 6,000 square foot lots where the, with the average lot size being 10,230 square feet. Our current PUD language requires that the base zone district, they can go down to half of the allowable lot size. Currently, our R1 zoning is a 40,000 square foot lot, so in the PUD, they can go down to half that size in our current language, which would be 20,000 square feet. Up until we change the density, they could have gone down to as little as 12,500.
To the pleasure of this body, we're going from 40,000 to 20,000 because it's going from R1 to PUD, so 20,000 is what our limit would have been, and they're asking you to go from 20 down to 3,300, 5,500, 12,000, 6,000. Hear a motion to do so? And the resolution dies for lack of a motion. Correct? No motion, we'll move on to second variance.
Third variance.
Sorry, third.
They are seeking to allow construction of 5-foot sidewalks. The sidewalks will meet ADA public standards because they are on both sides of the road. Where they are proposed, they are on the private road network only, meaning that the road commission will not have response, nor the county will have responsibility for them. Our PUD requires a 6-foot sidewalk under ADA standards. However, we were always going to have a problem if, if they proposed a PUD with public roads throughout, because even though our PUD requires 6-foot ADA compliant sidewalks, the road commission says no. So my personal opinion, I think the variance is reasonable.
Motion for.
Got a motion and a second on these, who go from 6-foot is requirement 5, it's going to be on both sides of the road too, as well, right, Tom?
Yes.
Which allows the, that does fall within ADA compliance. Got a motion and a second, any discussion on this one? CNN, if you're ready to vote, vote yes if you want to allow the variance on the sidewalks, on the private roads. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
22 yes, 2 no, 1 abst.
Variance three passes? Tom?
The next item is a private access community provision within our zoning ordinance. They are exercising a private access community provision out of our zoning ordinance because they are trying to overcome some of the road commission and WEMA's concerns about both road width, side yard setbacks, et cetera. So they're requesting that they be allowed to develop those private access communities into 150 lot pods, if you will. The maximum allowable lot number behind a gate, or within a private access community, a singular one. a singular one, would be 50 lots, under our current zoning. In this instance, they have adequate access and circulation through the private access community in each of the three pods that they're looking at laying out. If you look at page 38, might be a good one to look at...
43 is good, too.
Yeah, 43. You can look at 43, probably shows the road typology. But again, the orange road is a public road, starting on the far left-hand side at Bates Road, and going all the way through the neighborhood, and coming out, I believe, on Estes. You have a pod that kind of goes down to their riverfront development, or their lakefront cove development, and then you've got another pod that has a circular drive along the riverfront and the bluff. And then you have a third one that's kind of to the east, that comes back in in two places, to the primary road spine.
Do I have a motion to allow more than 50 lots in a section?
These will not be gated. They will be, they will have monuments to indicate that these are private access networks, road networks, that are the responsibility of the HOA.
So I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Kurtz?
Commissioner Denton, I mean, sorry. Commissioner Beth made the motion, and Commissioner Chandler made the... Second, please. Commissioner Kurtz? Sorry, Beth.
Tom, I just make sure I understand that the reason to do the private access roads is to get out from under some requirements that maybe...
Some prohibitions that the Road Commission...
Things that are prohibited, in other words.
By the Road Commission in particular, and some variance from our standards on road width, that I think we're going to cover, we've already covered.
So we do a private access road to get away from things you wouldn't be allowed to do if they weren't private access roads, therefore you're limited to only 50 lots, but...
That's true, and many of our gated communities, which is the private access communities we have to date, already are doing that, but that's the reason they're gating them, is they want sidewalks.
And then we're going to triple that. So we're getting out from under it, and 50 would be good to get out from under it, but now we're asking to triple it and get out from under it.
Yes, sir.
I would be against this variance.
Commissioner Breeze?
I'm going to try again. Can you explain the parking situation to me? I understand there are alleyways. I don't know what happened. There's the mic again. I understand that there are alleyways, and I understand that there's probably rear entrance garages to these homes, but there was conversation about allowing parking on the street. So are we talking about actually having a street where you can actually have parking in front of one house on one side, and then one house on the other side?
Yes, sir.
Which narrows your ability to travel down the center.
In working with WEMA, well, first of all, our current road network is 28-foot wide curb and gutter, is the county Road Commission standard, as I understand it. That's roughly two 14-foot lots that may arguably, if you think about it, be overkill for a neighborhood road. It does allow for good emergency access. It does allow for good access by buses and so on and so forth. So I'm not criticizing it, I'm just saying there are many in the industry that would say that 28-foot wide within a neighborhood road is excessive. The road sections are on pages 68 through 70, and what they are accommodating is two 11-foot lanes in the middle of each of these, two-way routes, which would be 22-foot of travelway. And on the places that they have parallel parking on both sides, it would be an 8-foot row of availability for parallel parking and/or bike paths on each side of the road. On the one-way sections, I believe they are asking for...
They were asking for 14.
They were asking for 14, but they went to 20, so that they could have a 14-foot one-way route, plus the 8-foot or 6-foot path, or parallel parking.
Then on the two-way, Tom, I think you told me today, you told me in the beginning, it was 11-foot travel lanes, and then they'd have 10-foot on each side to park.
Eight-foot.
But I think they moved that to 10-foot, didn't they, Tom?
No, it was initially 7.
Okay, so they went from 36 feet total to 38 feet. So where'd the 2 feet go?
The 2 feet went from 7-foot parking width to 8-foot parking width for parallel parking.
Okay.
The neighborhood on each side, so that's the 2 feet.
Okay.
And then the Neighborhood Edge, which are your larger lots in large part, is asking for 30-foot width with parallel parking on one side. So they would have 2 11-foot lanes going one-way each direction, one 11-foot lane going each direction, plus an 8-foot parking bay to one side.
Okay.
And there are, many of the Neighborhood Edge do not have alley access, so they will be front-loaded lots in addition to that.
Okay, so they'll have rear garages, though?
No, they will be front-loaded in the Neighborhood Edge.
Okay, so they'll have garages on the front of the house, though?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Not just street parking?
Right.
Okay. Sorry, that's not what the picture shows, so that's why I'm double-checking for...
I'm looking to make sure I've got it right. I think 74 of the 79 lots do have alley access in that particular typology. 79 of the lots in the Neighborhood General and Neighborhood Center have alley access. So that leaves five lots that do not.
But they'll have a garage with a driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm looking at page 69, Neighborhood Edge Street Private, and it actually doesn't have a driveway or a garage in the photo, oh, well, in the rendering, which is why I'm asking these specific questions.
Okay.
So, okay.
Every house will have a driveway and a garage.
Yes.
That was my question. Okay, because again, the rendering doesn't show that. That's why I'm asking for specifics. Thank you.
Good. Commissioner Denton?
But, again, 74 of the 79 Neighborhood Edge lots, if I'm looking at it correctly, no, that's Neighborhood General. I apologize. All right. That's right. Front access, front-loaded.
Commissioner Denton?
Yes, sir. Just to give them, to make them private, doesn't take any of the danger or safety or anything problematic off of our other main roads. It just calls it something else. He's still, their traffic is still traveling down the same roads. Just gives them freedom to do what they want to do.
It is.
And an elitist kind of mentality here. That seems, that doesn't seem safe nor fair to the drivers in Wilson County on those roads. It only protects those inside of that community.
I don't know that I would, I don't know that I would call what they're doing elitist. Maybe their choice to request that might be considered elitist. But I think what they're trying for is a certain typology, a certain type of development that's commonly referred to as neotraditional town development, that kind of harkens back to older patterns of residential development in smaller towns, where you might see, in a modern application, you might see it somewhere along the coast, at Seaside or 1A Development, or in some of the Atlantic Coast states, with some of the development that's been done there.
Commissioner Dow?
I was just wondering, how does this stack up with London Coats or Mount Juliet Coats? Same road, same road width?
Yeah, I've not compared it, in fairness, Chief Dow.
Same road.
Yes.
London Road for tight.
Yes. There are many narrow roads, and there are many narrow roads in the county, some of which they're proposing to widen.
Commissioner Hall?
Tom, can you tell me, we're going above 50 lots on these private roads. When was, that was established by the county, that allowable number of lots. Can you explain why we set it to 50 and only 50?
I think it was because, at the time, when we set up private access communities to allow gates and whatnot, that it was, number one, it was new to our Road Commission and others, and they were concerned about having too many lot owners that had property fronting on a private road network. If they ever had a weak moment, and those folks came hat in hand and were tired of maintaining their road network, and came hat in hand to the Road Commission and said, hey, would you please take over our road network as a public road, and we'll take down the gate, they didn't want an over extensive amount of road network they would have to go and maintain. And the other thing that the current network, or the current gated community provision does, is has 28-foot wide curb and gutter, just like a public road. And the off-chance that they did, the Road Commission did have a weak moment and choose to take over those private access networks.
Is there any anticipation they'd ever want to take over anybody's property?
Probably not.
Okay.
Mr. Gentry?
We have, I live in Delaware, but we have a gated community. Of course. And we're not allowed to park on the street at night.
That is a...
But that's a local, that's a...
That's a product of your development.
Right, and all our streets are private, also. We maintain them. And the roads, we have bar trucks, we have everybody coming in there just like normal. And the roads are not any wider than, I don't even know how wide they are, but they're not real wide. But during the day, people do park on the street occasionally, but we all have garages, and everyone has one. It's normally two-car. So I don't see this as a problem. Plus, they probably want sidewalks there, and that's probably why they did it.
Yes. I will say that, again, this development is, in spite of what you guys have opted to approve or disapprove, this concept is different to Wilson County. You've not seen a neotraditional development of this type in Wilson County, to my knowledge. Yes, there are some very nice PUDs in Lebanon and Mount Juliet, but you've not seen anything that has followed this type of concept. Again, the closest thing I can think of that you might be familiar with would be along the Gulf Coast. Some of the golf cart communities, some of the, Seaside comes to mind as a Duane and Plater's Arborette development, that was designed under neotraditional town planning at form-based code, that speaks to some of the images they have at the front. It's an overall character area that they're trying to develop.
Seeing no other discussion, are you ready to vote? Vote yes if you want to allow them to have more than 50 lots in a section, up to 150, according to this one here. Vote yes if you want to do that. If no, vote no. Commissioner Costin? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
18 yes, 6 no.
Varyance passes. Tom?
They're requesting a modification to the building, modification to permit buildings to have over 50% hardy board type material or composite LP siding, LP smart siding, I think is what the brand name is called, with the exception of soffits and trim. Soffits and trim almost by default have to be vinyl unless they're wood, both of which would be either flammable or melt, to Chief's point.
It's a motion of the group, or the pleasure of the group?
Motion approved.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on changing out the... Yes, Commissioner Breeze?
I think this is more for Mr. Hobbs. Can you get a ladder to up these roads?
Yes.
You can? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about the siding? Change. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote if you want to allow them to have the variance on the hardy board. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
22 yes, 2 no. What else?
Varyance passes. Last one.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a moment to kind of discuss what they've done, because I think that's the last one of those variances?
You got the last one?
We've already done all that.
No, you got the open space, I mean, the outdoor living...
I'm sorry. Request the minimum square feet for outdoor living space per residence be amended from 300 square feet, from 600 square feet to 300 square feet. Again, that, I believe, is on page 29. This shows the lots that it would affect. The third picture to the right shows the lots that this would affect. And the PUD envisioned trying to make sure that they had some differentiation between lots. That's why we had 600 square feet of open space, private open space required with each structure in their initial PUD language. This is not the first time I've heard concerns from developers about that, because it's a lot by developer standards. But they can split that by putting it on the front porch, maybe a balcony, depending on the type of house, a back patio or a back deck. And they can split that 600 square feet that way. So if you imagine for a minute, they have a 10-by-30-length porch on the front, and then they have a, I don't know, a 10-by-30 patio in the back, that would accommodate the standard 600-square-foot requirement. They're asking for 300 square feet on a few of the lots. I've got that number, if you'll give me just a moment. Yeah, 35 of the lots, just to provide some additional differentiation between their housing stock, so that everything doesn't look the same.
35 or 135?
135.
185.
No, I don't think it's that big. Well, the key, I don't think if you counted those lots, would be, it may be 185. Okay, I thought I'd counted it differently earlier, so that's my bad.
It is 185? What is the pleasure of the group, ongoing from 600 to 300? Is there a motion to do so or not?
I'm going to do it for a second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Franklin, or a second by Commissioner Gentry. Now we're ready for discussion. Commissioner Kurtz?
I guess I should have probably said this at the very beginning, but next month, we're going to have another controversial, probably really long night, and I could just imagine, whether it gets voted up or voted down, some of the comments that are going to be made. And then if it does get voted down, we've just, really, this commission's opened the door to approve a PUD on 1,400 acres. Theoretically, is what we did tonight, by approving this PUD out in the county like this. And I can guarantee you, my friends out in Tucker's probably wouldn't want this type of development out there on their land, in agricultural area. However, we just, we've approved a whole lot of variances, didn't approve some, and we're looking at 185 lots, when our current ordinance says that they're required to have 600-foot, whether it's a lot, or whether, yeah, 600 square foot, whether it's a lot or whether it's not. Again, it's in our rules, and again, we're not going to follow our rules, and I'm against this variance.
Commissioner Franklin?
You know, I just wonder if this is even necessary, since variance one and two were not approved, because it seems to me that, because those two variances were not approved, it has altered the density of this development quite a bit, and I can't imagine that it's even needed.
It's definitely altered the extent of where will be developed on the property.
Well, in the case of living space outside of those lots, it just grew by a great deal, based on number two, anyway, and setbacks, number one.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure this is even pertinent at this point, but, because I don't think, because of the first two variances, it's going to be effective.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
No, I'm going to vote for it, because I don't think it's, I mean, the thing about a PUD, I've heard some comments about a PUD's breaking zoning rules, and that's actually why you do a PUD, is to not agree with the straight zoning rules. Now, it doesn't mean we have to approve all these variances, and we haven't, but if you don't, if you don't give an idea like this, the opportunity to address their density with open space, like, for example, we've already decreased the open space of this tremendously. with open space, like, for example, we've already decreased the open space of this tremendously just by not giving them the variances they've asked for. And I don't mean to wander here, but again, if we rezoned everything like Williamson County did to five-acre tracks, and we almost triple our density by 2045, there won't be any open space in Wilson County. Clustering these things in such a way that are well-planned, yes, you're going to have to do some variances here and there. But in the case of this one, I'm going to vote for it, because I don't think it's going to be 185. I don't, I'm not sure there's going to be 35. But anyway, if there are 35 left, I'm going to vote for it.
Commissioner Hall?
Grant a variance. Are we not granting a variance because they've demonstrated that the rule creates an undue burden on them?
That would be the Board of Zoning Appeals' criterion for granting a variance. It would have to be some natural or unself-imposed hardship.
Okay.
But in this case, the Planning Commission and the County Commission, by design of our current PUD, give you the purview to consider design elements that would otherwise need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for variance.
Okay.
No other questions, and no other people in the hopper here, so we vote yes if you want to vote yes. And from reducing it from 600 square feet to 300 square feet on outdoor living space, if you don't want to do that, vote no. Commissioner Hall? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Thirteen yes, eleven no, one absentee.
Okay. So as we look back at what we've approved, we approved the PUD. We voted no on the 10-foot and 20-foot separation. We did not get a motion, and I'm assuming I stood on have one.
It would be preferable if we could get a clear motion on number two, just so we can direct how this is going to proceed.
So, Mike, I want to go back. I had no motion, and so it failed for a lack of motion. I can come back now and revisit that.
You can, because the argument that it failed may or may not hold up, because it was never an actual vote done. There's just no action taken.
Okay. So when we revisit, if he makes a motion to approve it, and I had a second?
Second.
I have a second, but Commissioner Chandler, so now I could, I guess they can take a vote. But that's okay.
I think so. I just asked Tom about it. We both felt like it was stressful, because the entire thing was, you've approved some, you've not approved some.
And given what you've already done, it's going to have to go back to the Planning Commission for a revised master plan.
Commissioner Kurtz?
I guess I don't really know. I hate to disagree with Mr. Jennings, because I don't think I've ever disagreed with Mr. Jennings, but I think the issue was died for lack of a motion. I don't know how we can bring it back up to vote on. However, if that's where we're at, I renew my opposition to this. 3,300 square-foot lots, that's a really, really, really small lot, up to, and when, so we're going from 40,000 to 20,000.
By the PUD.
And then a variance, 16,700, to one of the smallest lots.
Correct.
Yes.
So we're giving, if one lot was 3,300 square foot, we're looking at a 16,700 square-foot variance. Of the total, we would be looking at somewhere around 400 variances, looking at lot sizes, when we're at 20,000 square-foot minimum. Again, this one really bothers me when this commission voted to go to two-acre lots in A1 to decrease the density and stop some of our growth, and then we're going to do this inside of a PUD and allow some of the density on the 207 acres. You know, I'm just bothered that, which way do we want it? Do we want larger lots, or we want really tiny, small lots? And I understand that maybe this is the way we need to go, and Mr. Franklin, I guess I can't totally disagree. We look at open space and, but out in the rural areas, I just can't see this type of development going on 1,400 acres, which is, which was, again, what we're setting up to come with a motion.
Let me explain myself on that, and feel free to continue to disagree. You might talk me out of it, but I've had some time to sit here and think about it while y'all were dealing with three, four, five, and six. If someone makes an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals downstairs or to the Planning Commission, we have to make a decision. We can't just say, we're glad you came in, but we're not going to decide it, because that's what we're sitting there for. And I got, I guess I'm comparing this to below. If they've sent it up here, do we not need to make a decision on it? That was my thinking.
Sure. And may I respond?
Well, and let me say one other thing, something I'm always concerned about, and that is, if somebody dissatisfied with this on either side, whether they want this development or don't, they have the right to appeal this within 60 days from tonight's decision. If they take that to chance to record, and the chancellor looks at it and says, you didn't decide all the questions, I'm going to send it back down. That's always, now, is this the first time I've ever run into this? Absolutely. Could I be wrong? Absolutely. Every now and then I get one right, though.
Yes, sir. And with all due respect, I think we did make a decision. I think the fact that there was not a motion, it died for lack of a motion. So we did, this body did make a decision not to put it on the table. So I think that is a decision.
Commissioner?
I would disagree with that. That's okay.
Commissioner Denton?
I agree as well, Mike. We did this.
Which, Mike?
We failed to rescind a motion, because we said it wasn't a motion. And now we are saying that we're going to go back and act on a motion that's dead. Why, just a few seconds ago, did we not get a motion a second then? And if we didn't get one then, what have we done? Just spent our time to try to produce one now and create again? Why would it come back up again, period, since we, it's already dead? I agree. It cannot be alive.
Commissioner Gentry?
I believe in Robert's rules, there's a motion to reconsider, and I think this would be in order. I make a motion to reconsider this, this number two.
Second.
Got a motion to reconsider and a second. Does that apply?
I almost wish I hadn't brought it up.
First of all, you got a motion and a second on the floor you've got to act on or withdraw. And you can do that. And then if you want to reconsider, which I think is what Mr. John's talking about, the previous inaction, then you can do that, if you wish, if you get a majority vote. But otherwise, I think you got to vote on the one that's on the floor.
We're going to deal with what we got on the floor first. Thank you all of you. You're not withdrawing your motion?
No.
And you're not withdrawing your second, so we're ready to vote right now. Commissioner Breeze?
Point of order, if we're going to do this properly, the calling for the question, we have to vote on calling for the question.
I second calling for the question.
That's fine. It can be a voice vote, but we have to vote as a body on calling for the question, if we're going to follow procedure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
We're going to vote now on the motion on the floor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good for you, number six.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the number two variance, that we got no motion for the first time. So Commissioner Hall?
I was in the hopper before the call.
And because Commissioner Breeze brought this to the point of my attention, once she called for the question, which I'd always had just taken Commissioner McFarlane's word, and we went on it, she called me on it and said, hey, look, the rules of order says you got to have a second and a vote, and when you have a vote, nobody else can talk. So that's why I didn't call on you. That come from Commissioner Breeze, and supposedly that is...
The rules indicate that there was a call for the question, and I believe I'm right on this, and you can correct me, Mr. Denton.
Somebody's in the hopper, they're allowed to speak.
No, I've always went by that rule, but I don't think, it is not a rule in our rules of order, to my knowledge. It's not.
Okay.
I rechecked her when she was getting on me. So here we go.
Sorry.
It's okay. We're ready to vote on the variance. Got a motion and a second. Vote if you want to allow the variance on number two for the lot sizes. If you don't want to, vote no. Mr. Scruggs, Commissioner Marlowe, all hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
None yes, fifteen no, one absentee.
Thank you. And what we will do is refer this to the Planning Commission for a revised master plan that complies with your approval of the zoning and your approval of the few variances that you did approve, while also acknowledging the ones you did not approve. With that, it's been, oh, I've still got one more zoning. I can't say that yet.
Yes.
No, I don't. I don't, really. I'm, I'm sure this, it has. It has.
A little bit, ain't it, Tom?
Yeah. So then, are you ready for the next item? Please. Okay. Joe Haddix, representing the Property and Logistics 840 LLC, has made an application to request an amendment to the 840 slash Couch Full Pike Master Development Plan. The property is located at 101 Logistics Drive, containing 13.18 acres, and is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 138, parcel 34. The purpose of the amendment is to add the following uses: gasoline service stations, manufacturing incidental to retail utilizing no more than 35% of the area of the structure for manufacturing; office uses, general retail, truck terminals, truck maintenance, and parking; equipment rental, and outdoor storage with appropriate screening. These proposed uses would be in addition to the light distribution and manufacturing and offices and commercial sales already allowed within the originally approved C4 master plan. This application for amendment to the, for this master plan were submitted to the Planning Commission on Friday, October 18th, 2024, and is being forwarded to the County Commission with a positive recommendation for added uses and developer commitments. Those commitments are, if the requested use requires perimeter screening per current zoning code, such screening will be provided. If screening is required along the western portion of the site, it shall be installed between the proposed improvements and existing TVAEs. A minimum of 5,000-square-foot building will be constructed on the northern parcel. No PortaJohn storage and/or sales should be permitted within the development. A final site plan shall be submitted for review by the County Planning Commission for any development on the northern parcel, and the storage of salvaged, wrecked, or junk cars is prohibited within the development.
This is in Commissioner Hobbs and Commissioner Evans's district. I'll refer to Commissioner Hobbs first and then Commissioner Evans.
This land already has that direction towards that area, so it's no problem.
Commissioner Evans?
Mr. Chairman, but I did have a question, Tom. I've watched a lot of discussion about PortaPodies at the... What was the request that they're wanting to do?
Well, their initial discussion with the applicant, with the staff, was that they had some equipment rental facilities that they wanted to put in there, and it was our estimation that at present, that use was not allowed under the current master plan. Some of those rental facilities, whether it's Absolute, or Herc, or some of the other ones, do have entire divisions that are dedicated to storage and rental of PortaJons, and we didn't feel that that was necessarily in keeping with the character of that overall C4 development. Same thing with the junk and salvage vehicles, if we allow car sales or vehicle sales.
Those are down with them?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, like the lifts and those types of things would be permitted there, as I understand it.
I do not think that they made a commitment to that. Crash it into the...
Yeah.
Before, knock that out.
I do not think they made a commitment to that, but that is certainly something to consider.
Have nobody in the hopper, Commissioner Hall, and so, sorry for that. Don't hear a motion from anybody on this rezoning?
Motion, Joe Prudential. Second.
I got a motion and a second. Now, any other discussion before we vote? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. If you want to rezone, press yes.
I thought we were doing that one by voice, about the voice vote? You usually put rezonings in the...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect as unanimous, and we saved you a little bit of work, Mr. Hunter. Sorry.
Okay. All right. Now, it's been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you and your predecessors. I've worked with some very fine individuals on the County Commission and two wonderful county mayors, and it's been a journey and it's been a process, some of it fun, some of it not so fun, but for the most part, I have enjoyed my time in Wilson County, and I continue to plan to be here, and I support and pray blessings upon each of you in the work that you do. I think that we do, in fact, live in one of the best counties in the world, so.
Thank you, Tom. Commissioner Kurtz?
How many chances that you'll stick around and help us rewrite our PUD rules?
I will certainly provide advice if asked.
On the CTS floor. Thank you, Mr. Tom. We'll move forward now with the reports of Minutes Committee. Commissioner Fields?
Committee, committee, representative, session, thirteen over. So, I've got the...
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reading of the minutes.
Most of this is a version of the...
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This time, I'd ask Mr. Brent Finley from the West Wilson Utility District if he would come forward to address the County Commission on the, oh, Mr. Freddie Weston, I've got the A-team here, my bad. Just an update, and you're welcome to come to the front, Mr. Freddie, if you'd like to do that, and just speak on your project of ARP funds. A question that was asked last week, when they came, Andrew came...
Get an invoice for $900,000, already sent in, a request for payment. And the other one was ARP money, and it was $1.6 million, and we just led a contract on putting some work at the water plant, and the total job for that was $4.6 million. So we earmarked it, and it's gone. So what other questions you got?
Any question, Mr. Freddie? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming today and making that report. Sorry you had to wait for a long time to get here. We should have let you go first. Commissioner Breeze, did you have something for Mr. Freddie?
I just want to say thank you. Seriously. Mr. Weston and I have worked together quite a bit in the area, and I just want to say thank you for being so responsive and serving our citizens so well. You're appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Anybody that may be added to the notary list?
It's all good.
Notaries passed out, they're in motion to approve the notaries. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You elect one member to serve on the two-year term as an alternate on the Board of Equalization. I'd like to recommend you for consideration, Ms. Pat Fields. Information was sent out in your packet. Please do not hold her husband against your vote. Do you hear a motion? Got a motion and a second. Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Judicial Commissioners, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner John Gentry.
The Judicial Committee had this afternoon or this evening, and we voted to recommend Crystal Warman for a two-year appointment to the judicial part-time position, that is. She trained and was working before. She had to leave due to personal issues. She has requested to come back, and she was recommended by the acting commissioner, Miss Stacy, and I make a motion, we approve her for two years.
Second.
Got a motion, a second discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record reflected, it was unanimous. Thank you, sir. Report for Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Bernard.
October 2020, 6:40, upstairs going to come from, I moved the minutes to receiving files.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Direct... Director's report, Director Joey Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
County Commission, good to see you tonight. I'm going to be real short. So, total cost so far is just under fifteen thousand, which is pretty normal for what we've been running. Our third ambulance in Lebanon got put on the road less than thirty days ago, and it's at Station Nine, which is two thirty-one north in Brettless Lane, and it has already took a load off of other outside stations. So, we're putting together graphs and charts to show how that will be affected, but so far, we have positive outlooks for that working. So, appreciate everybody's help in getting that done and putting an extra ambulance on the road where it was needed. So, other than that, that concludes my report, unless you got any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
Law enforcement committee met on November seventh. Minutes in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Robert Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, your report's in your packet. Couple of numbers I wish you'd look at is traffic enforcement locations. We had three hundred and twenty-eight complaints of traffic speeders across the county this past month, and I want you to look at that number, number of officer stops that was made, went from two hundred and eighty to six hundred and twenty-two. So, we're taking these complaints serious. A lot of them was, I know there's been a lot of discussion about Highway one oh-nine, Commissioner Bernard, but I, so it's, some of that needs to be addressed. Your, all the other numbers are pretty much on par. I would like to say one thing about the two hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary celebration, Commissioner McFarland, Commissioner Weathers.
Commissioner Hobbs.
Commissioner Park.
No, I, I was working with Corey. Commissioner Hobbs created this.
That was a success, and the main thing that I saw was the kids that was out there, how they was taking all of it in, and kids don't, we're losing a lot of people in this county that knew a lot of that history. We've got to pass it on to our next generation. I appreciate all your hard work in that. That concludes my report. I would like to wish every, each and everyone, you, can I, can we, can I, we're already saying happy Thanksgiving, and have a safe one, and enjoy your family in Turkey. That concludes my report.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee met Thursday, November seventh, five P.M. Upstairs conference room. Minutes in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Director of Schools' report, Director Jeff Letchell.
Good evening, Commissioner. You do have my report in front of you. Just. We're fortunate to have the resources we have to show that living history. I also would like to, another group, our students that participated in the monologues, if you got a chance to see that, there was a lot of work went into that. That was done in our, another fine arts program, where they, they worked on that and learned those parts and did the research. So, very good event. For my report tonight, enrollments, I think high as it's ever been, twenty thousand eight hundred and fourteen. That's up four hundred and twelve students from the end of school year. Put that in perspective, if fifty percent of them ride a bus, that's approximately six new bus routes, and we're still, we're still fighting, losing battle there and trying to find drivers. But that's just happened in, since school started, August one. All indication with that is, just talking to schools and registrars, people are just continuously reaching out about moving into this area. So, I expect those numbers continue to rise. Wilson County School District's graduation rate for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is final. It's ninety-eight point five percent, ranks third in the state of Tennessee, and there's a lot of work on a lot of individuals to ensure that a kid achieves that, including the student and their family, but our teachers, and all the programs that we implement to, to make sure that they have every opportunity to receive their high school diploma. So, we're pretty proud of that, and especially proud of where that ranks for a district this size to be able to do that. It's pretty impressive. Thanksgiving break will be November twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth, and we'll be out of session. Remember, December the fifth is Enough's Enough, and that's a Project Eye Guardian from Homeland Security will be coming in to ATC, and I know, thank you for, I think some committees got moved, so you can have the opportunity to attend. I encourage you to attend. I think it will be eye-opening for some of the things that we're dealing with in our schools, that students and technology and, and I know Homeland Security, Mr. Rich, is very informed of what's going on, but encourage you to attend if possible. It's for eighteen years and older, no children allowed. We will have free childcare there for parents that want to bring their children, but we, we want our parents to hear what is on these technology devices and what our students are encountering. So, it'll be a very good presentation. You do have graduation dates. They've been finalized. Each school level is included in your report, starting May thirteenth and finishing up May the twenty-fourth. Tomorrow afternoon, four to seven, will be our textbook showcase, where we, we allow public to come in, be for adoption cycle of science. One change in, in state regs now is adoption cycle's eight years versus six. So, there will be, it'll cost us more money up front, but there will be a saving budgetary with that, with doing that that way. But you can walk in ATC tomorrow at four o'clock, Event Center, publisher will be set up, and you, you can take a look at what our board will be deciding upon, the way that works. We have a committee make a recommendation. I'll make it to the board for that adoption cycle for science textbooks and resources. Due diligence has began, Watertown Middle School's future site, and that process has been approved of the board and already started. Construction updates, Legardo Elementary, finishing roof deck, really believe you're going to have a chance to get it dried in before it sets in bad weather. They were laying brick today. It goes by there. Part of the painting's already been done inside, first coat, so once we get a roof on, and windows in, you'll really see that building take off. Ground baking date, I think you're going to be receiving the invite that's coming up. We'd like for you to participate in that for a Wilson Central, I'm sorry, Central Pike Elementary. So, be looking for that in the next few days. We have approved calendars, twenty-five, twenty through twenty-seven. We're waiting on state approval. Went ahead and include them in your packet. It's two years worth of school calendars been approved of the board, and as always, you have both board meeting agendas included in this packet and some other resources. That is my report, and I will entertain any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you, Director Letchell. Report from Public Billings Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
The Community Committee met on Thursday, November seventh, at six thousand fifty-six, upstairs, conference room, conference room. Minutes in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Got a motion, a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Committee reports, Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
No report.
Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze.
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Broadband access, Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, broadband access, seventeen minutes committee met, Tuesday, November twelfth, five forty-five, upstairs conference room. Minutes to be on the desk.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Developing tourism?
The committee met on October twenty-second, six-thirty here at the upstairs conference room. We have one destructive scene in the second to last air ground. Commissioner Franklin was not in attendance, nor did he approve that, but I am, I'm still researching who that actually was. I will do a little research on the, on the video and get that corrected. Based on that, I make a motion to receiving file based on the amendment soon to come.
Chris, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Ethics, Commissioner Dow.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Cosley.
Finance Committee met Thursday, November seventh, five thirty-four P.M. Upstairs conference room. Minutes in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Chandler.
No report.
Thank you. Insurance, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
The Judicial Committee met, will see me, will be minutes will be in your packet next month.
Legislative ad hoc, Commissioner Cosley.
No report.
Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
Planning and zoning met on October fifteenth, five thirty. In packet, they move they be received.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rules, Commissioner Keith.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
No report.
Finance Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard. Covering the students in the back. You can go home if you'd like to.
You can go home, too.
Yes, sir. I just have one thing to do, and that is that report on debt obligation that I handed out. This is on the latest elementary school that was closed on October thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Face amount of the bonds was fifty million eight hundred and sixty thousand. We received a premium of two million four hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents, true interest cost of three point six six six, two eight seven percent. Of course, our bond rating marines the same. Hundred percent for education. We paid financial advisor fees of seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars to Stevens, Inc., legal fees to Bisperian Sims of sixty thousand, legal fees, legal fees to the Issuers Council of five thousand, rating agency fees of sixty-nine, three fifty, paying agent fees of seven fifty, printing and advertising fees, one thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, and underwriters discount, eighty-two thousand four fifty, four fifteen ninety-eight, excuse me. Total cost of issuance, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. If you look at the schedule on the next page, they do not balloon that way at the bottom. They just ran out of room. So, I will, I will send you the amortization schedule where they don't balloon that way. The amortizations that you see up to that point are pretty much correct. So, I'll get those to you, but that's all I have to do, and I know y'all have been here a long time tonight. So.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know if you had to do the notice, or Sheriff Bryan was going to do it for DRMO. I know we talked about the Law Enforcement Committee, just the notice that the Sheriff's Department made or may not, uh, surplus from the?
Oh, I think, does that actually have to?
I just think we, I thought we just had to notify.
Well, okay. So, what Commissioner Kurtz is, is referring to is the Sheriff's Department is supposed to make notification that they may buy surplus military equipment. It doesn't need a vote, so if, if we're supposed to, if I'm supposed to make that notification, it's made. They may buy surplus military equipment.
It's in the vote.
Okay. Don't have anything else, other than if you were not able to attend either of the workshops, those materials are still available if you want them. Great for insomnia. Other, other than that, my report is complete.
Your motion's approved.
Blue.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met November seventh, in upstairs conference room. Minutes in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolutions, Commissioner Marlowe.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash three to amend the Southern Wilson County Planning Growth Area Sanitary Sewer Access Guidelines.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash four to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment twenty-five dash oh-three.
I got a motion. I got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Dow. All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash five to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment twenty-five dash oh-four.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready? Mr. Evans? All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash six, adopting the program policies, procedures for the Wilson County Twenty Twenty-Four Home Rehabilitation Program.
Got a motion, a second discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash seven to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an additional appropriation from the General Fund to Veterans, No Vet Left Behind.
Motion and second discussion. Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your
vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash eight to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an additional appropriation from Veteran Services Reserve Fund to Veteran Services.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash line nine to reflect revenues received but not included in their original budget and to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation to the Sheriff's Department.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Twenty-four and one.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash ten to reflect revenues received but not included in their original budget and to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation to the Sheriff's Department.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash eleven to reflect revenues received but not included in their original budget and to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation into Health Department.
Motion approved.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash twelve to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation to the General Debt Fund to rec FEMA money deposit into the Incorrect Fund.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Commissioner Hall? All heart, oh, Commissioner Chandler? All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Twenty-four and one, resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash thirteen to reflect revenues received but not included in their original budget and to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation to contributions.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Denton? All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record. Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Resolution passes.
Do you know if Table TV could approve this?
Yeah. Yeah, they did.
They did.
Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash fourteen, to amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution, to make an appropriation from Capital Projects Fund to PEG Channel.
Got a motion, a second discussion? CNN All in favor say aye. I'm sorry, never mind, forget that. Not ready for that yet. Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four and one.
Twenty-four and one. Need a motion to go out of session to consider the last one? All in favor say aye. Now, we're gonna consider the purchased property of, at 513 East Lester. I need a, it's a money question, so I guess gotta do a roll call on that one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. This resolution here, so we do a lifetime estate for the 513 property. That property, I have talked to her, she is willing to accept a lifetime estate at two twenty-five, is what we paid for the rest of the homes. If she leaves early, then we get the property. If she passes, it automatically goes to us by the deed. That's what the resolution's about. We just, we took care of the other ones, we just didn't take care of that one, and so that's why it came to you late. Any questions or conversation, order your motion. Any discussion?
Is this the final track?
This is the final track, yes, sir. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, one no, and one absent. Resolution. Old business to come before this body. New business, Ms. Beth Bowman. I'm sor, are yours old business too?
Yeah.
Got you. Ms. Beth.
Yes, it's a reminder to invite everyone who hasn't been able to attend one of our community workshops for our future master name plans. We have one tomorrow night, Tuesday, November nineteenth, at Watertown Elementary, and our last one will be Thursday night, November twenty-first, at Gladeville Middle School. These have been very well attended. Most of you have attended one of these community workshops, and thank you for participating and coming out and listening to our residents. Tomorrow night is at Watertown Elementary. Oh, yes.
And tonight's being filmed too, through GNRC. Commissioner Breeze? Commissioner Breeze?
Sorry, you're reporting right now.
I got one more to go to, sorry.
Gotcha, it's okay. I just wanted to share some information that I think that the commission might be interested in. On Friday, I visited the property on Linwood that we're gonna be discussing on December sixteenth. I was escorted by Perry and Phil Neal, who leased the land, and they have legal access. So, also in our party was Rachel and Marie Farley. Marie's father owned four hundred acres of the property, and it's where Marie lived as a little girl. She was able to show us multiple locations where there are cemeteries, possible cemeteries, and evidence of homesteads where there's possible graves. In three and a half hours, we marked nine different locations that are all over the property. I believe that there are most likely more of these. Marie also remembers a stone circle that we have yet to locate, and when I asked her to describe a stone circle, she said, "Think Stonehenge," which I don't think we have anything like that anywhere else in the county if it actually exists. I also discovered that there is mention in the deeds that on tract one, two, and three, there are three surveyed cemeteries. On tract four, there's mention of an additional cemetery. None of this is in the documentation that we've received thus far. So, after I found all of this out, I reached out to the state Inspector Graham Perry, who oversees the Historic Cemetery Preservation Program for the Tennessee Historical Commission. So, I'm gonna read you a little bit of the giant email that I got today, but he said, "First of all, know that if there are cemeteries listed in a deed, whether or not we know exactly where they are, the cemeteries are definitely somewhere within the property location unless someone provides a document indicating that they have been relocated at some point. Based on my experience, I would seriously doubt such a document exists." He has updated his maps at the state level to show three of the locations gathered by us on Friday based on photographic evidence alone. He also suggests that we include the following in our decisions as we deliberate for this meeting in December. Number one, TCA forty-six dash eight, the Familiar Burial Grounds Protection Act requires a landowner to acknowledge the existence of any known cemetery in a deed of transfer to another entity. Since cemeteries have historically often dropped off of deeds for accidental or sometimes nefarious reasons, this act puts the onus on the transferring landowner to ensure the cemetery is in the deed, since graves themselves are never considered as part of a commercial transfer. Not reporting a known cemetery on a piece of property could notably be evaluated as an act of fraud and could be prosecuted as such at the decision of an affected buyer, and then he cited a court case, Walter Hines versus State, nineteen eleven. In the case that reported sites in your report, there are clearly at very least one cemetery which is likely at the location of the cemetery monuments, and we did actually find actual grave markers. I can share all this information with anybody who's interested, and then we found several other areas. We found one that had large, about six-foot-long divots in a pattern. There are ten or twelve of them all together in a field, and then not far from that were several field stones that were obviously made into right angles. And then we found another area that were very large, big blocks of stone on the ground, which obviously had some type of writing at some point or another, and these are all in different areas. So, he goes on, and he suggests that a survey by a professional to determine whether or not what they actually are, the ones that weren't clearly marked as with tombstones. So, he goes on and suggests that the developer needs to take all this into account, and like I said, it's a very long email, which again, I can ask the mayor to forward out to the full commission if anybody's interested. So, he goes on, he continues about, "If the developer does move forward, and if there is evidence of cemetery materials that are unearthed by the developer, the developer immediately needs to cease working in the area, and the Police, Health Department, and State Department of Archaeology be contacted immediately to investigate. Continuing with any work after such a finding could likely result in the developer being charged with a Class E felony per count as per TCA thirty-nine, seventeen, three eleven, desecration, and/or TCA thirty-nine, seventeen, three twelve, corpse abuse, something our office would clearly pursue," and that's the State Historical Association. So, his advice is to share this information, which is what I'm doing with you all. I have not, I don't think this has been given to the developer yet, but obviously it probably should, but all of these sites that we located are within tract A, which is where the overlay of the warehouses are. And as I said, there's nine sites that we found in three and a half hours, and I'm pretty sure over fourteen hundred acres, there's probably some more. So, I just wanted to share all that information with everyone, so you are aware as you deliberate and decide what to do in December.
Anything else to come before this body? We are adjourned.